You ready? Hey, Joe. You're the guy. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Des Moines City Council meeting for December 3rd. It's time that we get started, but prior to our beginning and calling the meeting to order, we generally have a message from one of our own city council members. And tonight, member Joe Gatto is going to have a moment. Would you like to stand up, Joe?
Sure.
All right, everybody that would participate with us, we'd ask you to stand at this time.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given to us. We thank you for our government and our state and our country, that you be with all of us as elected officials and as citizens, to be able to make logical and sensible decisions for our community, that you be with our Public Works and Public Safety folks as they protect us in service, and be with the rest of our staff. In your name we pray. Amen.
All right, let's call the meeting to order, and I'll ask the clerk to please take role.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. I will say that on the consent agenda this evening, items, item 12IAC, these are corrected roll calls. Other than that, does anybody have anything else, council? If not, could we have a motion?
I'll move.
Gene has been moved. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Item passed is item three is approving our consent agenda tonight. Those are items three through 33. These are items that are generally enacted on one roll call vote without any separate discussion unless somebody from the audience or a city council member has to have one pulled for further discussion. This evening, item 16, council member Westergaard wishes to speak. Item 24, council member Gray votes no. And item 30B, council member Coleman votes no. Are there any other items, three through 33, that anyone would like to have pulled for additional clarification or discussion?
I see none, Your Honor, only of item three.
All right, item three has been moved. Let me ask everybody to vote.
Seven yes.
All right, that takes us to item 16. Item 16 is a land property transaction. 16 specifically is approving the Lower Four Mile Creek-Greenway Property Acquisition Agreement with Polk County Conservation Board, Council Communication Number 18-629. Council member Westergaard.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take the opportunity to once again share with the residents of the city how impressed everyone is with the flood recovery on June, that happened June 30th with the flooding. The next day, we had the evacuation sites set up, we had public works, we're busy at work. I'm being told that it was the quickest buyout that we've ever seen in the city. So, it's just, just a shout out to everybody with the city and for the residents, because the residents in the Four Mile area were all great to work with. They had lost their homes, but they still had positive attitudes, and they worked really well. I encountered so many people that said Public Works came by, and they were helping them, you know, load their damaged items into the trucks, and everybody was working well together. And that's just exactly the way we want it to be. So, and a thanks to Scott, because I know Scott, you were there on Sunday, and, I mean, you were there. You were there at the evacuation site, and you saw firsthand what was happening, and you responded immediately. And I thank you for that, and I know the residents of the city do too. So with that, I'll make the motion to approve item 6 to Scott.
All right, point well made.
Seven yes.
All right, that completes our consent agenda and takes us to item 34. Item 34 is amending Chapter 114 of the municipal code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows. A, Council Communication, by the way, 18-640. A is establishing a commercial loading zone on the south side of East Wallin Street for the Hoover Building on the State Capitol grounds. B is removing parking on the north side of Hull Avenue from East 15th Street to Villa Vista Drive. C is removing parking on the west side of Southeast 18th Court from Evergreen Avenue to Thornton. Ask if there's anybody in the audience like to make any comments on this item.
Seeing none, I'd move it, and move the second and third readings to avoid additional work and cost, and we can get the issues fixed for our neighbors.
All right, so council member Coleman moved item 34, A, B, and C, and is waiving the second, third readings.
Seven yes.
All right, item 35 is amending Chapter 118 of the municipal code regarding fee for connection to major sanitary sewer facilities, Council Communication Number 18-653. A is a final consideration, the ordinance above the waiver is requested by our city manager and requires six votes. Ask if there's anybody in the audience to speak on this item. Seeing none.
I'll move item 35 and 35A.
All right, item 35, 35A has been moved.
Seven yes.
Item 36, these are communications and reports, is a request from some citizens to speak regarding a possible local option sales tax. We'll go ahead, and it says, "Some citizens." Do we have any idea how many folks are thinking about speaking this evening on this item? All right, we've got quite a few. Can we get kind of a head count here? One, two, three, four, five, seven, eight, yeah, just a second, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, and so I've got about 19, it looks like. And we really appreciate everybody coming down, and hopefully, everybody will have a new piece of information, and we're not repeating the same things, but we certainly always like to hear from citizens. There was one question out there from somebody.
A gentleman in the back, Your Honor, with the Iowa State shirt.
Oh, he's item 37. Okay. All right, we'll ask the first speaker to step up. Give us your name and your address, please.
Good evening, my name is Jim Johnson. I live at 2809 46th Street in Des Moines. Thank you, City Council members, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager. I am a member of First Baptist Church of Greater Des Moines, which is a member of AMIS. We are here en masse to speak to this issue. Like, if you're with AMIS, would you please stand up? Thank you.
Thank you all for coming down, appreciate it.
Over the summer, AMIS talked to over 500 families in the Des Moines area, and we basically asked them a pretty simple question. If the city of Des Moines were to propose a local option sales tax, what would you vote for to raise your own taxes? And we're here to tell you what the answers from ordinary citizens in Des Moines are. One of the issues was infrastructure. We would like to see improved street repair and maintenance, improved snow removal, improvements to sidewalks, and improvements to our sewers.
Good afternoon, I'm Sally Buckhold. I live at 1433 45th Street in Des Moines, and I am a member of First Unitarian Church of Des Moines, which is also a member of AMIS, and I'm speaking on behalf of the AMIS Collective. We would like to see the city council be a leader on children's mental health in this community by allocating funds to assist in building and implementing a children's mental health crisis unit and observation center. The crisis unit is a matter of public safety, which we need not just for adults, but for our vulnerable and desperate children and their families. We are asking you to include this funding in your spending resolution for the local option sales tax. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Sharice Williams. I live at 1434 East 18th Street in Des Moines. I am also the chair of the Martin Luther King Neighborhood Association and a proud member of AMIS. I am coming to speak on behalf of my neighborhood, though. What we would like to see, if we were to go along with this tax, is programming in our neighborhood, at our park. Currently, we have a beautiful building that I call a monument that's in the middle of the park, that's being underutilized. We would like to see some programming there. The residents would also like streets and sidewalks, and we just want to have a piece of the pie, basically. We seem to get the littles of anything that happens, so we just want to make sure that our residents actually see something from the tax that we'll pay into. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'm John Royal, 1838th Street. I'm president of River Bend Association, and we're a member of AMIS. And we would like to also support lighting in the park, particularly the Evelyn K. Davis Park. It's more a question of public safety than programming, although programming is wonderful, but we'd like to see additional hours and lighting in the park there. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Linda Kreipel, 3716 River Oaks Drive. I'm a member of First Unitarian Church, which is a member of AMIS. The reduction in library hours is contributing to the social and economic divide in Des Moines. Students who don't have computers or Wi-Fi at home are disadvantaged when it comes to doing research and/or their homework and submitting that online. Therefore, AMIS is asking that the city restore library hours to at least six days a week. Thank you.
I'm Frederick Gaddy, 3522 Viola Avenue, Des Moines. Also, the pastor of St. Paul AME Church, a member of AMIS. And during our meetings over the summer, where we met with over 500 citizens, housing was one of the most urgent issues that was reported in all of the House meetings. One of the issues identified was a concern about the lack of rental inspectors or the quality of rental inspections, especially for those areas serving minority and immigrant populations. We're also very excited by the neighborhood revitalization effort, but we continue to be concerned about abandoned and dilapidated housing in many of our core neighborhoods, for example, Chatham Park, MLK, and others. We certainly hope that there will be some funding to address these long-term blighted properties as we move forward. Finally, we continue to urge this body to work to increase the availability of clean, safe, sanitary, affordable housing in our city. AMIS thanks this council and the mayor for joining us in the discussions, and we certainly look forward to many of these being added to the resolution. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thanks for the opportunity to speak here today. My name is Joe Murphy. I'm representing the Greater Des Moines Partnership. The Greater Des Moines Partnership has been very supportive of this initiative in the past over the last few campaigns. We were very supportive of the language last year in the legislative session to remove the contiguous city requirement from state code, and so we look forward to working with this body and your staff moving forward on the possibility of local option sales tax in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Joe.
My name's Stu Barnes. I'm president of the Des Moines Police Officers Union. I'll give my address as 25 East First, because I'm a city employee, but I'm here speaking on behalf of my organization. I had a lengthy speech prepared for you, but everybody else has been so brief, so I'm just going to say that my organization, which is 270 members strong, would support a local option sales tax as it pertains to raising revenues for not only the police department, fire department, but other city entities that could use additional funding. In the past, we had kind of sat by the sidelines as we watched the issue go forward, but this time, we would be wholeheartedly behind it. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Stu.
Mayor, council, manager, my name is Joe Van Hahn. I represent the Des Moines Professional Firefighters of Local 4. Like Stu, I had a little bit longer speech prepared, but we know the importance of the sales tax for us in public safety. I've been here in front of you on several occasions, talking about our staffing levels, the need for maintenance, the need for equipment, and the need for a new station, especially on the northeast side. We are all in on this as well. We know the importance of it from the first conversation I had with Scott, probably about a week after he took his position. We talked about what we could do for additional revenue sources here in the city of Des Moines, knowing how strapped we were. I encourage the citizens of Des Moines, as well as the council, to get on board with this and help us through this, and we can do it. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks, Joe.
Good evening, Mayor, County, and the City Council. My name is Eleanor Hildebrandt, and my address is 2607 Emma Avenue in Des Moines, Iowa. I am a Roosevelt High School senior, and should a local option sales tax pass this spring, I hope you use some of the money to offer expanded library access to all of our Des Moines Public Library buildings again. I have volunteered at the Des Moines Public Library since I was 10. Watching a student conduct research on the internet that they can't afford at home is inspiring. Hearing a librarian help a child as she first learns to read is uplifting. Some of my fondest memories are of my mom teaching my sisters and me that books, reading, and curiosity are important throughout daily life. She did this while we visited our South Side Library almost daily. I know the city of Des Moines needs many things, and I know others will advocate for those needs, but nothing is more important than creating lifetime learners. The library is the great equalizer that we have to give those a hand up. In Des Moines Public Schools, my school district, the largest in the state that serves 32,000 students, there is one teacher librarian on staff. Cutting librarians and cutting library times has implications for students and adults alike. I hope that you see full access to our libraries as an economic development issue, because it is. Businesses will decide where in our region to open up shop based on an educated workforce. Taxes and infrastructure play a role, but without educated employees, businesses don't work. Fully opening the doors to the libraries opens opportunities for people rich and poor, an opportunity to Des Moines. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. That young woman said everything I, almost everything I could say and better. I do want to stress one other thing, though. My name is Isabel Osias. I live at 118 Water Street, and I'm the secretary of the Library Board of Trustees. I'm here to assure you that should we get any funding from the local option sales tax, that we would, our primary goal for that funding is to restore ours. We can improve our programs, we can provide wonderful activities, we can provide computers, we can do marvelous outreach, but all of that depends on access, and access depends on hours. So that's, for us, the local option sales tax is a chance to restore ours to at least six days a week, hopefully for our two largest branches, to seven days a week. The Library Board of Trustees is fully behind this effort, and, you know, I hope the city council will get, you know, behind it as well. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Isabel.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, manager. My name's Kent Sovereign. I live at 1534 Germania Drive in Des Moines. I'm here as an AARP volunteer, and with me, a few of our AARP livable communities, age-friendly community volunteers here in Polk County and Des Moines-based. If you all wave for a moment, there we go. I'm going to, I'm not going to direct. In living in a vibrant and livable community, an age-friendly community, say first of all, health. Now, health is more than just physical health, it's also all the infrastructure and everything that supports that, everything from stormwater, sewer, other people have mentioned, derelict buildings, it's having all those things around you that assure that you can live a healthy, safety, and active life. The second thing is connectedness, and a few people have talked about the libraries and the importance of that. Social connectedness, cultural connectedness, access to events, ability to interrelate with people of all ages. And thirdly, authenticity, and here's one of the areas that doesn't get quite the focus, but this is around the complete streets, neighborhood communities, street design, the amenities that make for more walkable, livable communities, and engage people within authentic neighborhoods that we are so proud of in Des Moines. So once again, we're going to be full-throated in support of a local option sales tax for the city of Des Moines that helps for a more healthy community, a more connected community, and a more authentic community. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kent. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening before you. My name is Mark Ward. I reside at 5004 Woodland Avenue in Des Moines, and I work at 505 East Grand in Des Moines. I'm here representing the Taxpayers Association of Central Iowa. The Taxpayers Association is an organization that was formed in 1921, dedicated to effective and efficient local government in central Iowa. Following evaluation of last year's ballot language for the city of Des Moines, the association offers the following statement of support. Reducing reliance on property tax improves the climate for economic growth. Studies consistently show that high property taxes can be an impediment to growth, while sales taxes have less effect. Nationwide, Des Moines currently ranks the top 10 among the largest cities in each state in terms of effective property tax rate for residential, commercial, and apartment properties. Des Moines is committed to a specific outright reduction in property tax rates should the measure pass. Such a change would prevent Des Moines from continuing to be an outlier, which would in turn enhance the region's economic growth prospects. Residents of Des Moines would pay only a portion of the tax, but receive most of its proceeds. The estimate on proceeds is about $37 million, 30% of which would come from outside the city of Des Moines. The local option tax is a vehicle for Polk County residents outside of Des Moines who use and benefit from Des Moines' high share of tax-exempt property to help pay for that cost of serving that community. In supporting the local option sales tax in Des Moines, the Taxpayers Association urges you and the city to use language similar to that which was used on the ballot in 2018, which gained a majority of the vote. The association also urges the city to become even more aggressive in using tools such as shared services and other collaborations to optimize the use of all tax resources. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Pam Carmichael. I'm here not only as a citizen of Des Moines, I've lived in Des Moines since 1969. I live at 1504 Thompson Avenue, but I'm also here on behalf of Home Incorporated's Board of Directors, organization which I am the director, executive director. For 50 years, Home Inc. created opportunities for affordable housing to help stabilize low-income families. The opportunities we provide include acquisition, rehabilitation, construction of housing for low-income individuals. These activities have occurred throughout Des Moines, not any specific neighborhood, not in just one location, but we've done this in almost every neighborhood in Des Moines, and in some suburban areas. We've been a partner, a revitalization partner with the city of its neighborhoods since Stockard Engler was first passed in 1990. We believe that work that we have done is important not only to the clients, has a positive impact on the people that we serve, but also the neighborhoods in which they live. We have an aging and functionally obsolete housing stock. We have vacant and abandoned housing and commercial areas. As a result, it has become more and more difficult for us to compete with the suburbs for new homeowners. The people who live here are also seeing their housing values decline. There are people who live here in homes that could use support through revitalization for maintenance and repair and improvement. People are not doing this, not all people are doing this because they don't want to do it. Many of them are doing it because they do not have the financial resources, nor do they believe if they do it, that it will have an impact on their neighborhood. We're very supportive of an increase, of an effort to increase the local sales tax to support the revitalization, the new revitalization plan of the neighborhoods. I know people will think that this, will call this tax regressive, because I think it will impact poor people the most, and in some instances, it may, but I also know it will help, because of the number of people that live in substandard housing in our community that could benefit from some of the activities that would help in the area of revitalization. But most importantly, to me, as a resident, the tax will be paid by thousands of people who come here to enjoy the many benefits that Des Moines offers, yet they do not live here, nor are they responsible for helping to support our crumbling infrastructure, our park system, our downtown activities, and the police and the fire that support those activities. As a Des Moines resident and a director of Home Inc., I'm not going to agree with everything goes into the new revitalization plan, but I do know that we have to do something, and we have to do it now. And I see the local sales tax option, some of that money going into revitalization as helping the entire community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for your time. My name is Kevin Hilton. I live at 815 Euclid Avenue here in Des Moines, and I am also representative of the North Central States Regional Council of Carpenters, Carpenters Union Local 106 here in Des Moines. And I'll try to be concise as well, I don't think that I could... And I'll try to be concise as well, I don't think that I could say as well as what has already been said. However, I want to be on record for our organization in support of this. We do believe that this alternative revenue income provides benefits that aren't currently available. In studies, it's shown that an estimated forty percent of folks, residents that live here in Des Moines, don't have the opportunity to pay into property tax. We also know that this sales tax would also provide for an additional forty percent of revenue that would come from outside of the city of Des Moines, which we think it benefits everyone. And I say opportunity to pay in, because I think the hyperbole of, anti-tax hyperbole and regressive tax hyperbole, I think, doesn't speak to the heart of the people of Des Moines that truly want to pitch in, truly want to see a great city, and they want to do their part in that. And I think that this gives the opportunity to. And so I thank you for the opportunity to challenge us about this, a different way of bringing about revenue, but I also want to challenge you all to be bold, be bold about your vision of a great city. I think what's been shared here tonight is a bold vision of greatness, and I know that individually it's in all of your hearts to do that. So don't hold back, I mean, go after this and build a great city for us. Thank you.
Kevin, thank you.
Mayor, Members of the Council, City Staff, Jim Ballard, 4007 Southeast 26th Street, echo all the comments that are previously made, and ask one additional thing that you actually make, I make the formal request here, that you actually establish a date for an election for this, put it on the ballot as soon as possible, it would be best that way everybody who has a position to take on this will be able to get that in front of the voters. So that's my request this evening, that you establish a date for a vote. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Mr. Mayor, my name is George Davis, and Council members, I represent Southwestern Hills Neighborhood Association, and I've listened to a lot of speakers tonight, and I realize there's a lot of needs, a lot of wants, and a lot of requests for the upcoming money if it passes. I think it's very important that the Council continue to work to get this to pass. Moving forward, I appreciate all members of this Council that have spoke at neighborhood groups and have worked very hard, and I do appreciate your openness and listening to everyone. So moving forward, let's keep working on it. I agree with Jim, let's set a date, and let's get this moving. Thank you.
Thanks, George.
Hi, I'm Stacy Freeland, and I'm with the American Heart Association, and so we represent hundreds of our volunteers that live here in Des Moines. We also have been very actively advocating for the Move DSM Plan that the city has been working on and has approved now at this point. This was something that was presented to us as a great way to try to help pay for that big plan for the city, and we have so many volunteers that I can think of right now that are stroke patients, some who have had heart attacks that have mobility issues. And when I think of the Move DSM Plan and some of the really great things that are within it, our patients are going to be able to, be able to move around the city much, much faster and safer. And so I wanted to bring up Maddie, who is one of our volunteers that has been very active in this, and I'm going to let her speak a little more of why this is important.
Hello, guys. I think the move regarding the sales option tax is very important, because I believe that every person, no matter if they don't have a disability or what, deserves to have this and have safe sidewalks, safe streets, and also better lighting at the streets, sidewalks, so people that can't see during the night or early in the mornings have better seeing. So I am full support on the local option tax. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Matt.
Thanks so much.
All right. I want to thank everybody for coming down this evening and reminding us what some of the things are that we all should care about around the city, and I know that this Council, we've spent a lot of time out of neighborhoods yearly, annually, and going from neighborhood to neighborhood and hearing what's going on in your neighborhood, but tonight, hearing some specific needs that might be applied to a local option sales tax certainly gives us a strong reason to get together and come together as a City Council and maybe put something together, possibly put on the ballot. And our thanks to all of you who live in Des Moines, support Des Moines, work for Des Moines, and we're all here to do the best we can to support you all, and I want to thank each and every one of you for the City Council for coming down this evening and letting us hear what you care about and some of the priorities that we should focus on. So thank you all very much. So if we could have a motion to receive and file all these comments, and hopefully our city clerk got them all down, and we can put it on a strong list so that the Council can consider all the elements that were presented this evening. And again, thank you all for attending.
I'll move to receive and file the comments. I would like to direct them to our city attorney and our city manager to bring back, as I think a member of one of our commissioners said, the soonest possible date, to consider what they've brought forward and to consider a plan going forward. I think most of us know there's a tight window if we want to do this, and so we'd like you to act as swiftly as possible.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Go build us a great city. I love it.
Why do you have to come up? Seven yes.
Welcome back.
You didn't, you brought fifty-five people with you. Yeah, you could have been twenty.
I got one ton.
We had nineteen.
Okay, let's move ahead. We need to move straight to the hearing items. Let's note that it's 5:06, Madam Clerk, and our first hearing item is item number thirty-eight. This is on the approval of documents for conveyance of excess city property west of and adjoining 2418 Sunset Road to Barber Brothers Enterprises LLC for thirty-five thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Is there anyone in the audience here this evening to speak to this item? We'll open the hearing.
Seeing no one, Mr. Mayor, I'll move item thirty-eight.
All right, item thirty-eight's been moved, and we'll close the hearing. Voting's underway.
Seven yes.
Item thirty-nine, on the issuance of not to exceed seven million five hundred thousand dollars general obligation bonds for essential corporate purposes, A is the authorization for additional action. Let's go ahead and open the hearing on this item. Is there anyone here to speak on the issuance of general obligation bonds?
I see none. I'll move thirty-nine and thirty-nine A.
All right, thirty-nine, thirty-nine A has been moved. Any comment? Seeing none?
Seven yes.
All right, item forty, on the issuance of not to exceed six million three hundred thousand dollars general obligation bonds for essential corporate purposes, A is the authorization for additional action. We'll open the hearing on this item, item forty. Anyone to speak?
I'll move item forty.
All right, item forty's been moved, and we'll close the hearing. Any discussion?
Seven yes.
All right, item forty-one. On the assessment of five hundred dollar penalties to liquor license holders for violation of the Iowa alcoholic beverage laws, sales to minors, A, Royal Foods, fourteen forty-three Second Avenue, and B, Sam Betty's, fourteen thirty Second Avenue. Is there anyone here to speak regarding these penalties for liquor license violation?
Seeing none, I'll move forty-one A and B.
Can we vote on them separately?
Sure.
I do have a conflict of interest, as everybody probably has well guessed, on B, so I'm going to pass on B, but I will vote on A. So vote them separately?
You're not a minor.
You're not a minor, you're not an owner.
I'm a minor, forty-nine.
Can I remove my motion?
If you would, restate the motion to approve forty A first.
Forty-one A.
I'm sorry, forty-one A first.
To make that motion? I'm going to move forty-one A. Sorry.
Seven yes.
And I'll move forty-one B as well.
Six yes, one abstain.
Six oh one.
If I was in high school, I'd start heading to Second Avenue.
Right. Item forty-two, this is on the James W. County Sports Park signage improvements, resolution proving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as Samuel's Group, Inc., Sydney Samuel's President, seven hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, Council Communication Number eighteen dash six thirty-six, A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet, and B is approving, approval of an agreement with Mid-American Energy Company for Plaza sign and sponsorship at the James W. County Soccer Park, and authorizing use of Soccer Park and city name as a sponsor of the Soccer Park, Council Communication Number eighteen dash six thirty-one. Let's open the hearing and see if there's anyone here to speak on this, item forty-two.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think anyone's here to speak, but I think, thank you, first of all, to our Parks, specifically Ben, for being the quarterback through this whole thing, and, you know, Mr. County is a very giving man, along with Mid-America and Prairie Meadows, to be able to offer this signage. I mean, private funding of up to eight hundred thousand dollars for this is pretty amazing. It's a great amenity to have on the South Side, and, I don't know, Chris, you want to chime in or anything?
I've taken kids to soccer and baseball tournaments, you know, at times around the Midwest. I can tell you, this is going to, there's going to be a lot of people on Saturday mornings pulling over to take a picture in front of this. It's going to be a grand welcome from the city of Des Moines to people that travel from all over Iowa and the Midwest to attend tournaments at these facilities. And I think you pointed out, Mid-American, they've been generous for a long time to these facilities without any official credit, and so I'm in particular really happy that we recognize Mr. County, but also Mid-American in action number two, or B, whatever it is.
Yep. I will move forty-two A and B.
Seven yes.
Takes item forty-three, on River Bend and King Irving Sewer Separation Phase Two A Resolution Proving the Plan, Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineer's Estimate Designating the Lowest Responsible Bidder as Jasper Construction Services, Inc., Cliff Rhodes President, six million sixty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and fifty cents, Council Communication Number eighteen dash six forty-four, A is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Let's go ahead and open the hearing on this, the River Bend and King Irving Sewer Separation. Anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, let's go ahead and close the hearing on item forty-three. River Bend Sewer Separation. Hopefully, we can get these sewer separations, this will be the end of the tunnel for these things, but this thing was about a half million dollars over engineering estimates, but it's got to be done. So where they come up with fifty cents on a six million dollar bid still baffles me. I'm going to move forty-three and forty-three A, and the neighborhoods really need that.
We're going to start a little cup, and put it in the back, fill it, and we'll just fill it in the set.
Yeah. There we go. We'll get it. Thank you, Joe.
We'll see what we got at the end of the year.
Seven yes.
Item forty-four, on cheap pile retaining wall repair and trestle to trestle trail east of Beaver Avenue, resolution proving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as Herberger Construction Company, Inc., Dean Herberger, President, five hundred and fifty-two thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars, Council Communication Number eighteen dash six forty-one, A is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet. We'll open the hearing on this. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on this item? Item forty-four, trestle to trestle east of Beaver Avenue. Seeing none, let's close the hearing.
I think many of you know that I'm leery of the extras. This is a trail that already exists and something that people use. I think it's important that we fix it up. We have already gotten testimony that we should probably abandon it and shut it down or fix it. We've invested a lot of money in it, so I'm going to move this tonight.
I'm going to just, my original stand on this was, even when the bids were coming out before, they raised the engineering estimates, they're now four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Now, that's seventy-seven thousand five hundred dollars over engineering estimates. I understand, I've talked with Ben on this, anguished over this quite a bit, I understand the need there, I understand the money's there, but I'm going to go back to June thirtieth and July first. If you had the opportunity that I had to drive along the streets of Beavordale and Merle Hay and Lower Beaver and see the damage that was done, because we need to get some functioning sewer systems put in place, one of the things that I've heard was, don't be spending money frivolously. Let's get our infrastructure taken care of first before we do this. And I understand, we have to take care of bike trails as well, but my promise to the people of Beavordale was, I take a look at each and every action that we take, and if I felt that it was not getting things done in the Beavordale neighborhood to get these sewers done, I wouldn't support it. So that's my stance today. I understand, Ben's been very helpful with me with the agonizing vote I got to take, but I'm not going to support this. All right, and Ben, thank you for actually taking care of this and putting a plan in place. The pictures that you have sent out, the liability there is huge, and I think it needs to be taken care of as soon as possible, so, thank you. Yep.
Six yes, one no.
All right, anybody going to move this? Kristi?
We've already voted.
I'm, I think.
Six one. All right, let's note that the hearings end at 5:17. Takes us back to item thirty-seven. This again is a communication report, this one from Joe Timmich. Sorry? Timmich. Am I getting better? Timmich? All right. Fifteen nineteen Grand Avenue to speak regarding the Des Moines Police Department and downtown construction. Joe?
Okay, the first question I have, I live at fifteen to Grand, we want to know what's going on at Yonk.
I'm sorry?
Whose street does that belong to? Does that belong to EMC or does it belong to City of Des Moines? The street in front of EMC. What has taken so long with that?
So Mayor, if I could, that property has changed hands, and EMC has recently purchased that property. So only recently?
They own the street?
They do not, it is a city street, but it is closed because of the support. You'll notice there are support mechanisms that are out in the street, that's why You'll notice there are support mechanisms that are out in the street, that's why it's closed.
Okay, how long is that going to take?
We've asked EMC for plans on when to develop.
I've got nothing from them. I've been told to leave the building there. So, what does that tell you? What do they do? How long is it going to take? I think you're just being used. I mean, what's it going to take, 10 years, 15 years?
Well, I think in all fairness, they've only had it for maybe three months, the property. They just purchased the property from the previous person that...
Okay, how much time do they have to do something with it?
I don't think they take...
Well, isn't that something you're supposed to know?
I would expect to hear from EMC fairly soon.
Okay, the next question I have is, how much are we in debt right now in the city?
Please stab yours.
And why is that?
We are about a little less than $400 million in debt.
Why is that?
We choose to build roads and bridges that are going to last 20 or more years, and we pay it out over those 20 years, not unlike people would buy a house that they intend to live in and use for 30 years, they pay it over that period of time. I will tell you that we are under our policy on how much debt that we want. Sounds like a big number, but it's a small percentage of the overall assessed value of the city. It's about four, it's less than 4% of the assessed value.
Okay, when a contractor tells you that he needs more time, how do you verify that? Do you just go by his word?
Pam verifies it.
How do you verify?
There is a set process, sir. We can provide that to you.
Okay, what is that?
No, we can provide that to you. I'll reach out to you afterwards.
How do you get that? I mean, how do I obtain that?
No, I will get it to you. I have your contact information, so I can...
Okay, and also, can I be, I've looked at the map of all the con, one thing that bugs me, you can't walk in the city of Des Moines downtown without running into construction. So, is the main goal just money? Is the main goal to track the most construction project? How is that decided?
What, I'm sorry, which question?
You have so many contractors coming and doing business, is there any concern of people's safety? Take seven, I want to give you an example. I have to walk down from Locust down to the bus station on 7th. Here, we've got construction on this side and construction on this side. What is in the world is with that? I walk down there, I get honked at. I told them I'd call the DOT on it, and the next day, they fixed it. What in the world are they, what in the world are you thinking of when you put construction on this side of the street and construction on that side of the street? What is that about?
Sir, you know, one of the things that we, I think pleasantly celebrate is that there's a lot of companies that have a strong interest in downtown Des Moines, and we can't exactly say, you know, one person can build over here and, by the way, you can't build over here. If they come to our departments and ask, it goes before our community development department, they review the plans and see what we can do to accommodate their interest in expanding workforce. We've gone from, you know, 40,000 workers in downtown over the last 30 years to nearly 80,000 today. And it seems as though there's an interest in more coming downtown and working downtown and making this their home. We're proud of that part, but unfortunately, from time to time, it does create a little bit of inconvenience for citizens, and but, we do demand that they do it in a safe way. And if it's not safe, why, hopefully, you and other citizens will get in touch with us and we'll work with police department, public safety, whoever it takes to make sure it gets set up in a way that, make sure that everybody is safe and out of harms way.
That's hard for me to believe when you've got construction on one side of the street and construction on, what is the two sides of the street? What is that about? Is there any, what concern of safety was that? You have no walkway.
Scott, can we?
That should be, that should, city attorney, does that violate any type of safety?
I think maybe what we should do is set up an opportunity for you to speak with the manager's department and go over this series of issues that you're thinking about, because the council, usually, we receive, file issues, but, you know, we don't have an open discussion because we're not quite sure what all the issues are that you may have this evening, but I think that we, given the list that you have, I think maybe it'd be appropriate for you to sit down with staff and go over them. Did you want to quickly jump to the Des Moines Police Department issue, that whatever it is that you have there?
This is a little complicated. How much time do I have?
You're just about out.
Well, maybe I should take up the police.
Okay.
I just still can't understand to me why, did you guys approve construction on one side of the street and construction on the other side of the street? Did that pass here?
Well...
That is allowable.
It's allowable. And sometimes, it's allowable. And, you know, sometimes people will say, well, why, how did you shut the bridge down? Because now I can't get across the bridge. We'd ask that they go to another bridge and hopefully get across it. Hopefully, if 7th Street is blocked, you'll go to 6th or 8th and walk down those streets.
It's not blocked.
Okay, but if you feel unsafe, that would be my immediate suggestion, that maybe you try to do that.
Okay.
But we'll see what we can do to see what the exact problems are that are facing...
Okay, my final question is, have you, what do you call it? What do you call it? Supported expenditure that did not work right?
Have we supported an expenditure that did not?
Right, that did not work out.
We'd have to refer that to the city manager. Mr. Manager, are we okayed anything that didn't work out?
Yes. I'd have to sit down with you and talk through what, is there a certain, yeah, hiring a city manager? Is there something specific?
Do we have a chance to get in the black?
Yes.
What's our chances? 100%.
Say we are in the black.
So, we get this construction that he's talking about, and does the city generate money after this when they, when you complete the project?
Yes.
How much? Enough to go in the black? Is this planned out ahead of time or is it...
Our budget, we're required as a city to have a balanced budget. Ongoing debt to do projects to, for public safety purposes, for the infrastructure, whether it's streets, sidewalks, sewer, storm sewer, police departments, fire stations, those kinds of things. There is some debt on it, but the fact of the matter is that the city of Des Moines is required to have a balanced budget.
I can't see that when you approved $2 million for snowward move.
Okay, the city of Des Moines, that's in the budget, so that's...
How can that be when we're 400 million?
Sir, sir, that, that's a complicated issue, but it's, that's on the debt side. It's sort of like you own your house, why didn't you pay for it all at once?
I mean, I think the concerns are well-taken. I mean, we had a lot of residents who were here earlier who were expressing support for local option sales tax as a source of revenue.
Now, is this in connection with what I'm talking about? The debt?
So, we have, and part of the way the budget works, is some of the, some of the items that we fund, we fund through debt, and then we have debt repayment that is part of the budget.
What do you mean, you fund them through debt?
So, we get general obligation bonds and other forms of bonds that...
I don't know what those are.
This is what Councilman Coleman was referring to. So, on a simple level, over 20 years, we'll pay for a road. We'll pay for, we have to pay for the road up front.
Okay, in conclusion, how do I get a list of the developments that are happening now and what the expenditures are and what the delays are? Can I get something like that?
Do you have a specific project?
Any of them.
It's got a delay?
Any of them.
Which one are you talking about that's delayed?
I'm afraid, what I'm, why I came here tonight because I think the city is being railroaded by some people. You've got people, you've got constructor or construction people coming here just to say, well, we got a delay here, we got to, you know, we got to charge you some more money. That's what I'm afraid of.
That's a great question, I'm sure.
Is there any way you could check on the people?
The office will sit down and Pam will have all those answers for you and Scott...
Well, and one of the other things, Mr. Manager, he might spend a couple of minutes with a finance guy talking about balance sheets and operating statements.
Some of the problems I have is these new parking garage. I mean, why are they necessary? Because they're 30 years old or... Okay.
All right.
That pretty much does. Thank you for listening to me.
You bet, Joe. Thank you for coming down. Could somebody give me a motion, receive and file? He's coming.
I'll move to receive and file.
All right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Seven yes.
All right, we've got some young men here. Did you guys come down here to, just because you love city council, or are you guys here for...
Yeah.
Government class.
What class?
What class? I'm sorry? Des Moines Public Schools? Urbandale. All right, well, see, this is, you come to Des Moines to find out what really happened.
They don't want to listen to Bob.
All right, well, thank all you guys for coming down. With the completion of item 37 on our communication reports, that brings this council meeting to a close, and I want to thank everybody for attending tonight. Without, unless there's an objection, this meeting's adjourned.